has been done and what we're planning to do over the next 10 years of time. A big portion of it is development, which is nobody's going to see very much for the next three or four years because it's all environmental studies and hydrology studies. But so a lot of work will be happening with the specialists doing the work and then construction, you know, if we're successful would start in sometime in 2025 timeframe. So Matthew.
Yeah, and if you want, I can be over there to push the button because each line will come up by itself. So that's why I was.
It'll be yours best.
Okay. So we pump storage projects, we start out with a thousand questions and we take five years to get all the questions answered. We have questions. We have questions about geology that we have to answer. Water, we have to answer transmission, electric, you know, sage grouse. We have to answer all these questions and that's what we're going to be spending the next four years doing. Now, because even though I said I came here in 2010, 2011, and actually I found in my files a letter of the city of Ely unanimous support for white pine pump storage project in 2014, which is when the newspaper did a story about it. But really very little happened in terms of studies and moving forward because the market wasn't ready. We weren't ready. So really last year was the first big year of of action in terms of undertaking some initial engineering feasibility studies. First looks good geologically, whatever the basic topography. Move on to the next stage, a little more detail, a little more cost estimation. Does this look like it could be economically viable? Yeah, let's take the next step. Let's start seeing, let's start looking at the water and let's start looking at a all the the federal level and local and state permitting we're going to need in order to continue answering those questions to get to the point where we actually have a project. So I would say, you know, right now we're about a fifth of the way through that process. So it, you know, it might have been confusing for some people like water rights, water agreement. Now, does that mean we're going to be starting construction next year? Like something is about to happen in terms of that happening, and that's not the case at all. We are, we are in a very gradual process of investigating all the things that are needed to prove out the project and de-risk the project. And that is going to take tens of millions of dollars to do. Knowing that there is a source of water to fill the reservoirs. That is a very important question to answer early on, which is why studies will be done. But knowing that there would be a commitment to provide that water if all the tests are done, all the hurdles are cleared, it shows that no harmful impacts, et cetera, et cetera. Knowing that the water will be there after spending all the money it's going to take to go through all the studies is very important to knowing even if there's a project at all. So that's kind of why we're here. So but I'll run through the presentation and. So R plus hydro.
It's the full slide is going to happen.
Oh, that's fine. So leading developer of new pump storage projects in the U.S. Actually, let me do a slideshow and that way we can do it more gradually. So we're leading developer in new pump storage projects in the United States and I'll talk about what pump storage is. We were formed in 2019, as I mentioned, partnership between R plus energies and grid flex, which I and some partners started in 2009. We have 10 projects in different stages of development across the U.S. This one is in the most advanced stage of feasibility studies. Funded by Salt Lake based Gartner company, which Luigi spoke about, one of the largest commercial real estate developers in Utah. Offices in Boise where I'm based and Henderson. And we have a great core team that includes great expertise in energy, project development, pump storage specifically, and we engage the best firms to support us in that effort. So overview of the project Nevada is moving towards cutting back on coal, gas, fire generation and a lot more dependence on solar and other renewables. That's why the state's going to need a large amount of energy storage in the future. And we really only have two options for energy storage, batteries and pump storage hydro. And batteries are going to be built, but they have some major disadvantages compared to this type of project. Pump storage hydro best established, most economical form of energy storage that utilities use around the world. You have the best location in the state for a pump storage project. We feel after screening hundreds and hundreds of sites all across the country. Would bring an investment of at least 2.2 billion dollars to the community, including jobs and substantial tax revenue for 75 plus years, maybe 100 years. There's only been two of these retired in the world ever. They last a very, very long time. Project would have a relatively small footprint compared to say a solar or wind project and would require modest amount of water in the schema things that we'll talk about for initial fill and then evaporation makeup. And so we're working on local agreements and partnerships and getting questions answered so that we can minimize or eliminate negative impacts and be positive, a positive in this community for decades. So this is how pump storage works. You've got an upper reservoir and a lower reservoir. You pump water up using surplus or lower cost energy. So in the future, there'll be tremendous amounts of solar in the middle of the day that is not usable in the middle of the day. So it could be used to pump water uphill for this project. Or it could be other forms of energy that that is not needed when it is being generated. And thus we can store it, you generate down during peak hours. You're reversing the direction. It's extremely fast. Water flows downhill and you generate with it. 75 to 80% efficiency. It is a giant battery. So there is some efficiency loss in there. It would be designed to minimize that efficiency loss. One of the things that makes a good pump storage product is a very high vertical drop. It makes a very efficient use of water. We have 2,000 foot vertical drop here, which would be the highest in the United States of any of the 43 other pump storage projects. That means there's a direct relationship to the amount of water in the head. So twice the head of other projects, half the amount of water, same amount of power generated. 43 operating in the U.S. today, more than 120 around the world. So this is the location. It's about seven miles north, north of town. Lower reservoir, upper reservoir. We'll zoom in a bit here, another view of that. And we'll talk about why that reservoir is, is that why they're in those particular locations. What we look for is not only the vertical drop, but a natural topography or lay of the land to minimize the size of the dam you have to build. That location on the upper of the Duck Creek range, it has a very nice open space to it. It's not as steep and so it allows you to minimize the size of the dam you would need to get the storage volume you desire. And that originally the lower reservoir location was between the tracks. But I'll, I'll get into why, why it was moved in the current plan. And then the other thing that this map shows is an access road on the upper side that would be built off of the Duck Creek highway to get up there. But I want to talk about the reason why we've been looking at this project. So in 2019, legislation approved 50% renewable energy in the state by 2030 and then 100% carbon free by 2050. That means a tremendous amount of of solar, some wind, maybe geothermal and no, none of the conventional power plants that you need to maintain, to keep the lights on and keep the stable grid. So that's why a project like this comes in very, very handy. And November 2020, voters approved that 50%. That, that shift is likely to accelerate. We talked about solar and the need for energy storage. So this project, likely the most viable location for this type of project in the state could be a key to keeping that grid stability and providing that energy storage. And so it has this rare combination of features that we need, the high vertical drop I mentioned, over a short distance, topography, proximity to a source of fill water, which is always critical and the subject of a lot of interest, obviously. Proximity to transmission. So there is a Gonder substation right there, but it's too small for a project of the scale we're looking at now. But there's a transmission corridor to Robinson Summit substation, which is a very good place to tie into the grid. Relatively low environmental sensitivity compared to some other locations we're looking at. We do have to look at a lot of things that we study over the next four years, including environmental, wildlife, recreation, water, visual impact during the construction and after sage grouse, there's sage grouse habitat. It is very high priority study for us. We're going to have biologists in the field soon looking at that, that aspect and that. All those questions have to be satisfied to get, to satisfy the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, which for these types of projects is the federal entity that oversees these types of products. This has to satisfy the BLM with a right of way because it's all in BLM land. They have their NIPA requirements as well. At all the state level and other local requirements we have to get through. So but in spite of all that work that it takes, and we have a strong market here for the size of the state, the 8,000 megawatts of demand that is currently there, combined with the need for storage, makes for a good market for this type of project. So it's, the site is exceptional for all these reasons. So this, this map shows you the, the current transmission line. The big transmission line is the red one from Robinson Summit down in the south. But NV Energy is proposing to construct another, two more major 500 kV lines, one going west and one connecting the southwest and the northwest. And that puts, this site is already in a good strategic location as far as transmission goes. When that's built, it makes it even more strategic. And we haven't even drawn the lines of other proposed transmission lines that might come into this area from the north and from the east. That make it even more strategic for this type of project. History, so we filed our first preliminary permit in 2010. Preliminary permit with FERC isn't really a permit. It's just a placeholder. It says, hey, we're looking at this site location. FERC runs it through the legal notices. There's public comments. They issue the preliminary permit and you know, you go do your studies. But we filed our first one in 2010, another one in 2014. We have a little more community conversation then. I mentioned the Uly City Council letter of support and the story that was done about it. But still not, not much work done. 2017, third preliminary permit. And then finally in 2019, we really get down to business and start doing engineering studies and having conversations with the county commission and getting into the water question. 2020, we entered our second feasibility engineering study. So it gets more detailed, more expensive with each step. So we get our second one last, was finished last spring. Project continued to look good from an engineering standpoint. The discussions begin with Nevada Northern Bell Road in February of last year. Why? Mainly because, and I'll show you one of the maps later again. It has to do with geology and it has to do with project feasibility. And the original location is a little bit problematic. So that discussion began in February last year. Next step in FERC licensing began. We put together a pretty extensive document on background, the environmental context of this location. Things that we anticipate have to be studied for the FERC license. And that was presented here in September at a public meeting. We invited other agencies to submit comments. The county submitted comments and requests as part of that. And then the next step balls in our court to do all these studies and present that to, you know, what's called the draft license application end of this year or next year. Draft license application to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And there's lots of steps of public input opportunities for that. And we want, we want public input continuously because that, that tells us what we need to study, what we need to be able to answer to the public. So earlier the better really. So and then we have proposed a memorandum of understanding with the railroad and the city to collaborate with them so that we can address the concerns that they have. And we'll get into that a little bit. And we also filed a right of way application with the BLM, which they haven't begun processing yet. But that's a parallel track because we have to satisfy their needs as well as FERC and then the county. So now we have the water agreement coming to a vote. And we did our first presentation to the Ely City Council. I think that was about a month ago, just introducing the project because they're involved specifically in that railroad question very much. And then we're preparing for geotechnical studies, which is bore holes to drill to test what the rock is like at the depth to confirm the feasibility. Bore, each bore hole, we're talking about a 2,000 foot bore hole, which is, I don't know, 800,000 dollars. It's, it's a lot of money. And then you have the geo, the geotechnical people who are a lot of money as well to analyze the results of that. And all that feeds into the, the ever more expensive engineering studies. And you want to rule out fatal flaws. You want to know, is there anything that's going to kill this project from any perspective? You want to know early so that you can just stop spending money. But if the, if the, so if there's a red light, you know, if, what we look for is a green light or a yellow light. And yellow lights, okay, we can proceed with caution. Green is great, you know, we don't want red lights, but we want enough of it to come early on. This is a, basically the conceptual layout. You have, we'll look at different angles of this, but the upper reservoir in that ravine up on the summit area. Everything between that and the lower is underground. So there's an underground tunnel, a underground powerhouse. You've got some access tunnels that could be built to get there. And then the lower reservoir location along the alignment tentative plan of that upper track. This is what it looks like at the upper site. So that is approximately, this is looking east in that ravine. Approximate dam location there. This is a cross section of what it would look like, the underground. So it goes vertical shaft. It might be diagonal. There's a lot of refinements that go on in the design with each step. Horizontal shaft, the powerhouse. The reason why the powerhouse has to be underground at that deep is because of the pumps. The pumps have to have some back pressure on them basically. So they have to be set deeper than the lower reservoir. And the only practical way to do that with these is to put it underground and build a 4,000 foot long access tunnel to get there. So there's a lot of geological investigations that have to be done. This is looking from the summit down into the valley. You've got transmission corridor visible there. There's two lines in that already. We would add a third line that would go to Robinson Summit. About the same size as the, and same, same appearance most likely as the existing 345, the bigger line that's there. There'd be access tunnel portal right about that location. And then the lower reservoir areas is shown there. So this is some numbers for you. 5,280 acre foot capacity for the upper reservoir. 59 acre surface area. 175 foot high by 1170 feet at the crest. Again, these numbers may change as we go through the next round. There's basically five rounds of engineering studies that have to be undertaken. We're going to enter the third one pretty soon to refine these, these numbers and these locations specifically. Some adjustments. Lower reservoir is a little bigger. It has to handle a little more water. 80 acre surface area. Basically it would be constructed, but with a lot of earth moving, moving that alluvial rock, rock around to get us our storage capacity ranging from 10 feet on the edges to 130 feet at a maximum. More of a long, sort of elongated shape compared to the upper one. We're going to need to get into the tunnels, but they're basically 23 foot diameter tunnels for this size project. Powerhouse cavern 90 feet by 360 feet by 150 feet high. Another reason why so much geological investigation has to be done to confirm that the rock there can, you can build a cavern like that. We think it, it can, but to be determined. And there'd be three very large generating units in there that pump in one direction and generate in the other direction. 30 foot diameter access tunnel that you can drive trucks through. And then a 23 mile transmission line to Robinson Summit in that existing corridor. All right, let's talk about water. So during the construction phase, so it's estimated this project will take about five years to build. And because it's so early in the design, we don't have exact numbers on what that's going to be. But our current estimates are it could be 750 to 1500 acre feet per year just for, you know, dust and concrete and all that stuff that requires that for five years. The initial fill, which can take place over a six to 12 month period, depending on when that reservoir is ready. 5,340 acre feet, because that's the lower reservoir capacity. And then makeup water for evaporation loss is roughly 10%. So we're estimating 500 to 750 acre feet a year. There are ways to cover reservoirs. We haven't looked at that for this particular site. We are looking at it at some projects. You know, the only downside is if you're looking at the reservoir from above, you're going to see a pond of floating black discs that are for evaporation control. So it's, it can be considered, but you got to factor in all the, you know, is it, is it a scenic? Which in this case, the lower reservoir could be a scenic aspect of the train tour in the future. So that's something we would have to think about that. Right now, we're just assuming it's evaporation loss. The reservoirs would be lined to prevent seepage. So the history, so you know, the valley, the county was allocated 25,000 acre a year for economic development around the coal projects that were proposed years ago. That never got built. And so our, our understanding has been that if those water rights are not used, they can be revoked. And so in August 2020, when we came to talk about the project, the county commission unanimously passed a resolution to commit to providing fill water for the project. It wasn't a, you know, there was no agreement contract signed like what we're talking about now. But it was, it was a sign of commitment that helped us, encouraged us to keep going with this project. The permitted, the well sites associated with that 25,000 acre a year are north of McGill. But our study showed that a pipeline from that area down here would cost 30, 40 million dollars. And so we looked at, could we change a point of diversion to do it close to the lower reservoir site? So we wouldn't have to pipe it so far and save money and make the project more viable. And so that's what we're looking at now. And then, so yeah, so construction phase water sources being identified for both the lower and the upper reservoir sides of the project. For construction for the upper side, it's most likely that we would pump, pump water from the valley up to the top. Because the alternative is to run a lot of water trucks up the Duck, Duck Valley Highway, a lot of water trucks. And that would not be a good idea. It would be, you know, for the volumes we're talking about. So we're, you know, that, that will be, that we haven't got to that phase of the design, but that's what we're thinking about. And so the water agreement is what we're here to talk about mainly in the final approval stages. So the purpose of the water agreement, its intention was to help the county hold on to its water rights and provide revenue to the county from day one, long before any water is used. And to help us as the developer and as the developer's investor know that, you know, if this project passes all the engineering and environmental requirements and water studies and everything that's going to need to give it a green light, to know that the water will be there and available to us to fill it. That is the purpose from our standpoint and we can help the county along the way to do that. So we, the proposal is lease about a third for a lease agreement for the first five years to lease about a third of that 25,000 acre feet. Even though the actual amount, there would be none of that water used for the next four, four or five years of studies. Then a fraction of it most likely would be used of the actual lease amount. A fraction of it would be used for the construction phase. And then the second part of it. So that would be $50,000 a year, which is for a third, which compares to the mining water agreement, which was the same amount of money for 24,000 acre feet a year, even though they used very little to none of that. And then the purchase portion of it is for 750 acre feet a year for use in the long term makeup water for evaporation loss. The reason why it's a purchase is because the project is such a long lifespan that whoever ultimately is the owner of this project to have, to have that not under a lease, but under a purchase, so it's essentially owned as, helps. It helps with that kind of a timeframe. And then if it's not used, it all reverses to the county. We cannot sell that water. We cannot transfer the rights for any other purpose. It's only, can only be used for this project. If it's not used for this project, the county gets it back. And last night, we discussed this with the water advisory board, who ultimately voted unanimously to support the county moving forward with water agreement. And I think the main reason is, you know, they recognize that the risk to the county, there was no risk to the county essentially. The county gets benefit from it and we get the, the confidence that if we pass all these hurdles and tests, that the water will be there to be able to fill it. And we won't be stuck after spending tens of millions of dollars on a project. Studies are planned. So hydrology, we've already begun looking at some of the models, but look at the hydrology of the basin, the water budget of the basin. Where the likely well sites would be, do pumping tests, confirm, you know, what the impact would be at that location on any wells nearby. So that is planned to be done. And it has to be done. Want to touch on the railroad. So this is a, this shows some of the geology. You know, three types of geology, the really solid hard quartzite rock is in the green. Then you got a transitional rock, which is limestone and shale. And then you got the alluvium. Originally, the concept was to put the lower reservoir right on top of the alluvium, which is problematic from a geological and engineering standpoint. So in the second engineering study, they said it would be better, much better to move that reservoir location to where the tunnel can just contact the lower reservoir and outline in red there and not have to go through any tunnel through any of the alluvium. And that would save money and it would just make for a more viable project. Challenge was puts it on top of the railroad track for about a stretch of 3,000 feet. 3,000 feet is the length of that reservoir. So. So that would necessitate realigning about five miles of the track. Why five miles when it's only 3,000 feet? Because the railroad told us, if you're going to realign it, you got to keep the grade only less than. Because the railroad told us, if you're going to realign it, you got to keep the grade only less than one and a half percent. That's our limit. And you got to keep the turns within a certain degree radius. And using that information, the engineers came up with about a.